We call that a July meeting order this time. We do have a quorum seven of seven. Shall we stand for invocation, pledge allegiance, please?
Let's pray. Most gracious heaven and father, we just thank you for being able to gather here tonight, dear lord, to conduct the business of the county and give us the wisdom to do what is best for the county and its residents and let the meeting be done in harmony with everyone. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First thing on agenda, would they approve of the agenda?
No move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion is seconded agenda to be approved. Are there any questions? All in favor? Yes. The next be the approval of the claims.
No move.
The motion is seconded, the claims be approved. Are there any questions on the motion? All in favor? Are there any announcements at this time?
It's up to minutes.
You gotta do the minutes.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, the minutes. We need to approve of the minutes. Take a motion. Motion is seconded, the minutes be approved.
No, 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 you had Mr. Chairman.
Make your motion again.
Take a motion. Motion is seconded, the claims, are the minutes be approved? Are there any questions? All in favor? Yes. Next we'll get to the claims. Approval of the claims? Hi?
You did the claims first.
Did the claims.
So we're now on announcements now.
Having announcements? You be having announcements on it? Anybody have an announcement? Well, we moving down to public comments.
We have four signed up tonight. First is Chad Oba, District Six, and Marie Flowers will be next.
Good evening, District Six, Chad Oba. So I'm here tonight to express some pretty serious concerns about the Riverstone Solar Project and how this developer has repeatedly broken promises, not just to its neighbors, but to state environmental agencies as well. Many of these transcriptions were recently brought to my attention. When this project was under review, the developer told the Department of Wildlife Resources and the Department of Environmental Quality that there would be no stream crossings, none. They also committed to a minimum 50-foot buffer from all streams, the creek and retolance. These commitments were made after DWR raised significant concerns about environmental impacts from the original plans that included stream crossings. These earlier plans were supposedly scrapped in response. Now those same crossings are being brought back. One is already being pursued and another can be seen on current planning documents. That is not an accident. It's a calculated reversal, an effort to get those crossings through the back door now that the public and regulators have turned their attention elsewhere. Meanwhile, trees have already been cleared within the very buffers they promised to protect. Worse still, even the plans that were officially approved, the ones currently in use, don't actually respect the 50-foot buffers the developer promised. Those buffers weren't just a suggestion and a prohibited access road is being used for construction traffic. These are clear violations. The developer said one thing to get approval and is doing another when they think no one is watching. This is a pattern of behavior that shows disregard for environmental protections and for the commitments made to the state, this community, and few as our representatives. It's not just disappointing, it's unacceptable. We urge this board to investigate and enforce these violations immediately. The integrity of the county's permitting process is being clearly challenged. Citizens and landowners who are impacted need to know you will follow through and the developer should be held accountable to the promises they made. Do not send a message that a developer can ignore their commitments. Any building permit application should be tabled until all of the project plans have been corrected, conditions enforced, and Apex is held accountable. Thank you.
Marie Flowers, District Three, and Kenda Hahnemann will be next.
Marie Flowers, District Three, hi. I went to that meeting, that Apex meeting in Orvonia, and I was disappointed that there were no supervisors there.
There, Ms. Flowers.
Okay, all right, you're forgiven. But I did send two of you emails about it. I'm pretty sure I did because I tried to alert you, a couple of you, if there is something that I think you should know. Let's see, the meeting was at five o'clock. It could have been later for people who work. It might have been set for the employees of the company, but I think it should have been for the people who are most affected. Let's see. Okay, who's gonna, who's gonna enforce these regulations? I was gonna say a couple of things that Mrs. Oba said about a road being used that shouldn't be used. Who's going to inspect? Who's going to enforce? And, you know, I wanted to mention about the trees being removed. And somebody told me there's another solar facility up on 60, and that has had several violations. And my feeling is if the companies don't do the right thing, they should be shut down. We need to protect our area. They're out for money. We have our families here. We live here. We need to care. Let's see, and another thing is, do we, do these solar facilities have to be so big? And are you, as a group, who are responsible for a lot of things, are you getting enough information? Are you getting many different points of view so that when you make decisions and look at this, can you do it sensibly? And any one of you want to go out there and take a look at it with an inspector to see what they're doing? Thank you.
Kenda Hahnemann, District Five, and Brad Pickens will be next.
Kenda Hahnemann. Ms. Supervisor Bryant, District Five. Guess what I'm gonna talk about? Apex. Bet you could have guessed that. Think you're gonna hear it a lot, but at any rate, I submitted a letter to the editor of the Farmville Herald that ran in July 3rd, in case you missed it. I'm not gonna go over those items because you can look at that on your own. I would love to have seen you there listening to the public talking. It was interesting to hear from Jimmy Merrick, and he got an earful from a man who was there representing the data centers. He went on for some time. But Pete Kapacinski did attend. He was the only one that usually sits up there on the dais, but he was there as a citizen, not as his position. So I just hope you're gonna think about a few of the questions that I asked Apex. I asked about the lifespan of the panels and then the disposal because they're always talking about 40 years. The usual lifespan of those panels is 25. I don't know why they continually say 40. It would be interesting to find out why. It certainly makes the money sound more appealing when they're paying by the year. And for disposal, there's still a real concern when there's hundreds of thousands of panels. Are those going to the landfill? What's gonna happen? I know they'd love to be able to recycle, but that's not happening at this point. And then they always talk about the number of houses that will be covered with the amount of electricity that these panels are creating, but who really receives that benefit? That's, that's not for us locally. That's not any citizens that are gonna get money for this or save on their electric bill. Those bills are going up. Gary Ward, the CEO of, or Gary Wood, I mean, the CEO of Sebec, has said that the cost of our power is gonna go up radically, and they're making these for the data centers. I'm just wondering, are we really willing to sacrifice our farms and our forests for data centers? Nobody can answer that for me. I'd love to hear it sometime. Thank you.
Brad Pickens, District Six.
Chairman Chambers. Brad Pickens, District Six. I don't have to say anything because Chad, Marie, and Hahnemann kinda covered it. This is my monthly ditch and ditch. Obviously, I have to get into work right after this, so I apologize, I can't stay. They are in violation of a lot of the tenants that they said they were gonna cover. If you just look at the current plan, they have cut and fill and construction within the 50-foot boundary between private property and the projected project. The laydown area that did not go up for public comment, that was added later, I think was probably something that should have been discussed. I'm sure Ann Marshall would like to have known that it was gonna be right across the road from her. It is visible from the road, but more importantly, their runoff area is inside the environmental buffer for that zone, so they've violated the environmental buffer there. We did talk about the stream crossings, so in Merrick's letter to the DEQ, he stated specifically, there will be no stream crossings, and then they were approved. And now there's two stream crossings on their plan and they're cutting to make that happen. So again, the ladies covered this very well in front of me, so I'm just going over notes to make sure I don't have there. When things are brought up to Apex, the answer is, I'll get back to you. And for three years, I've been waiting for, I'll get back to you about zinc oxide from the galvanize on 30,000 pilings in acid soil. Haven't heard a word back. I'll get back to you on why your cut and fill, all the way to my property boundary, when it's supposed to have 50-foot visual boundary. I'll get back to you, why isn't my house plotted properly on your maps when you've done aerial surveys? You know where stuff's at, not you, Apex. So I'll get back to you as the answer, never get back to us. So again, I'm with the ladies. If their building permit is up for review, I say that gets held in abeyance until these things can be resolved. And if you have any questions on the specifics, I'm happy to share them. I'm happy to show you where on their plans these violations are happening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all signed up.
Moving down to V. Doc.
Good evening, Chairman, Board, County Administrator. Thanks for having me tonight. Following up from a few things that came up at last month's meeting, Mr. Davis, you mentioned some tree limbs, I think you said at Bryant's store there at Carter'sville Road and CJ Woodson. You said you'd called the area.
I was taking care of that for me.
Got that down? Good deal. Thank you. And then I still need to submit the speed study that I asked you, you brought up last month on Holland, it's Holland Road, a dead end off 15th South. So I'll get that done, Mr. Palmer, but thank you for letting me double check on the route there. And then last month, it was brought up about the lines where we've done patching work. So when we get done patching, we submit a request to the district line marking crew, and then when they're in the area, they, they put the lines back down. And then other roads that contractors are working on, like Howardsville Road, when the contractor gets done his work, they, they put those lines back down. So it's kind of a mix, but I guess the, the important thing is that the lines do get put back down, so we'll get that done if it hasn't been done already. The, I think we still have some more work to do on Thomas Road. Mr. Allen, you brought that up. When I took a closer look at it between last month's meeting and this meeting, there's actually a driveway that cuts up the hill. Looks like a lot of water comes down that driveway and washes out that one area that you mentioned, so. We do need to, we do need to try to fix that ditch to make it where it can handle that water better. And then we did take care of, I think at the end of the meeting, Mr. Davis, you brought up the water that comes off the railroad crossing there at Rocky Mountain Church Road. We took care of a similar issue at Buffalo Road, but we haven't got the one knocked out yet at Rocky Mountain Church Road, but it's on our to-do list. And then since last month, something that's never happened before in my career, a tree was struck by lightning up in Glenmore, and it actually heaved, the lightning went down into the roots and actually heaved the road up. I think that happened on July 1st or maybe into July 2nd, but right after that, we had to cut the road out there and fix it. And I think we had it paved back in about, by about July 7th, but, so I just wanted to update the board on that in case you guys were asked about how that happened. We're currently working on tree limb removal and brush cutting on Little Creek Road, and then, I think that's all that I have, seems like I might have time to cover there. We're currently still cutting grass in the county. We got our primary routes knocked out. We're currently about a third of the way done with our secondaries. We're doing contract mowing on those. So they started over in the Shepherd's area, kinda down there at the Prince Edward Line. They're kinda working their way clockwise around the county, but I think within about two weeks, we'll have them all knocked out. So if anybody's asking you when we're gonna mow, tell them we're working on it and we'll be done in about two weeks. But I can take any comments, concerns, or questions?
Boardroom?
I just, you answered my question I had for you. Grass is getting so tall, that Johnson grass down on our secondary roads, sometimes you can't see the pullard in the road. You gotta almost pullard into the other road to see down the road. I'll say you have them done within a couple of weeks. I got an answer for some of my big ones.
At the light espresso's corner, I had a couple, two people, but the grass, if you're coming up 60, headed west, when you stop at the light, look towards 15, that was Farmville, they said they can't see.
Huh. In the median there?
It's grass, it's grass growed up there, you know, limbs. I looked at the day the dude, we need to be cut back some.
Got you. Well, I'll take a look at that.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Good thing about that intersection is signalized.
Yeah, uh-huh, yeah.
That's all for me. Thank you, Board.
Thank you.
I have one.
You got one?
What's the schedule on Citizens and Firehouse Road?
Oh, Firehouse Road? So our rural rustic work, we're just about to get started if we haven't already, but Firehouse is first on the list.
All right, thank you, sir.
Probably as soon as we get done mowing, you'll see more activity out there. Thank you.
Moving down the Cape, couple of hands.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I'll take that up for Ms. Edmiston. Tonight's public hearing is SUP 357. The applicant is Philip Sanders and David Weimer from 463 Rosen Road, Rosen, Virginia, 22967. Tonight's property information is on tax map 22, parcel one, lot 30, containing approximately 4.2 acres, loaned on Hathcock Lane, Howardsville, Virginia, District Two. It is currently a zone A1 agriculture district, and requests tonight for this public hearing to obtain a special use permit to operate a campground. The property is located on tax map 22, parcel one, lot 30, once again, Hathcock Lane, Howardsville, Virginia, which is in the James River District. The landowners and applicants are Philip Sanders and David Weimer. The property is zone agriculture A1. The zoning ordinance does not permit a campground as by right, as a by right permitted use. However, within the A1 agriculture zoning district, a campground may be permitted by the Buckingham County Board of Supervisors by a special use permit following the recommendation of the planning commission in accordance with this ordinance and the code of Virginia. The planning commission may recommend the board may impose conditions to ensure the protection of the district if the special use permit is approved. The conditions are attached in your packet. There are no additional notes from the zoning administrator. There are 14 conditions in your packet, once again, that are with this SUP. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman, you want to open the public hearing?
The boardroom, we have a question for Mr. Carter. How do we open the public hearing at this time?
We have eight people signed up.
People, okay.
The first one is Mary Ann Wilburn, and Joe Phillips will be next.
There, I'm Mary Ann Wilburn. I live at 604 Hathcock Lane, which is one property over from David and Phil. And I've been an owner there since 2006, and I feel that they should be able to have their three RVs there for their family to come and enjoy the river on weekends. It's not a commercial campground. It seems like some verbiage or language could be changed in the permitting that would allow them to have this because it's not a commercial campground, and as they pointed out, you can't have a commercial campground on a private road. Makes no sense. And as far as everyone complaining about them taking down trees, and they're whining about it, if it were any of their business, then they would know that they were, this was litigated. They were fined for this, they paid the fine, and that's the end of the story. So are they supposed to be punished for all eternity for the crime of cutting down some trees on their property? No. And as far as causing flooding on Betty Pugh's property, that's not true. It didn't happen, and you need to fact-check everything she says because she's notorious for lying. And she's a nuisance. She blocks the road from other property owners. She tried to have Buddy Manchester and Mr. Brunz arrested for trespassing, for trying to get to their property. She blocks the road. She fires off fake sirens at night. She's the nuisance, not them. Their property is so tidy, her property looks like it's from a set of Sanford and Son. Truly, it's like a shanty town. There it is clean, tidy, he maintains it, it's beautiful. And you can't even see them down there. There's so much tree coverage, you don't even know they're there. They're quiet as mice. They're perfect neighbors. If I had to, if you could pick a neighbor, it would be them, not her. And she's pulled guns on multiple people. It's a nuisance. And as far as sanitation goes, it should be fair across the board because there's another property down the road and their system is built in a bog. It's a swamp, so that has to be not safe. And then another property has an outhouse, or did, and there are other dons-dons down there, and as far as I know, they have a system in the works to handle this. So it needs to be fair across the board. But they are good neighbors, quiet, reliable, trustworthy. They should be allowed to have a permit to have three RVs at their property. It's not a commercial campground, that's ridiculous, and they know that. Thank you.
Joe Phillips, and Betty Pugh will be next.
Good evening, my name is Joe Phillips. My wife Diane and I live at 268 Hathcock Lane. We strongly oppose this application. We've written to you previously to detail our objections, but I'll restate some of those in the time I have tonight. First, the special use permit does not prohibit commercial use and sets a dangerous precedent for future use. This permit has been presented by the applicant's family camping, but the SUP itself is not a permit for family camping, but a permit to operate a campground. And there's no condition attached to this SUP that prohibits commercial use, so the applicants or future owners could at any time change this from a so-called family campground to a commercial operation. Worse, passage would create a precedent for future development of commercial campgrounds along Hathcock Lane. There are still six undeveloped lots on the road, and passage of this SUP would offer an easy path for absentee owners to develop commercial use along Hathcock Lane. This is an unintended, but very real consequence, and it would have terrible impact on our neighborhood. Beyond that, however, this development is simply inappropriate on the floodplain. The units are clearly intended to be permanent. They have not been significantly moved in the years since they were placed. They're connected to power, one has a permanent roof erected over it, so if this is passed, they'll be hard piped to septic and presumably to water. At that point, they will be permanent dwelling units with wheels, more like a mobile home park or RV park than a campground. Nothing wrong with mobile homes or RVs, but there is something wrong with mobile homes and RVs on the floodplain, and I think the national news makes that abundantly clear. The issue of sewage is particularly important. Since the RVs are intended to remain in place, there's no way to connect to a septic system that doesn't involve piping sewage in the floodplain. When this area floods, which it will, how is the piping maintained so that sewage is not released into the river? So far this year, we've had one high-water event. What happens when we get a major flood and these units can't be moved? I went to the Buckingham County zoning ordinance, and in Article I, the purpose and title, it states in part, "Development is to be so located as to protect the watershed, protect surface and groundwater supplies, discourage development in floodplains," end quote. This development shouldn't be permitted. Denial does not prevent applicants from enjoying the river with their family. They have more than 20 acres of property above the floodplain, which can be developed in accordance with the A1 requirements. Those of us on Hathcock who have complied with these requirements are relying on this board to enforce the clear intent of the zoning ordinance and to protect our neighborhood and the river by denying this application. Thank you.
Betty Pugh and Sage Robertson will be next.
Betty Hathcock Pugh, 710 Hathcock Lane, 60 years' worth. What we're asking is that you not let them contaminate the ground or the river. What we're asking is that you not let them contaminate the ground or the river any more than they already have. One of the residents who already spoke got a, an illness from the river, had to go to the doctor, because it was contaminated. So what we're asking is that you consider the fact that this is a neighborhood, not an amusement park. You know, this is not King's Dominion, it's just a neighborhood, and we would just really like to keep it clean and nice like that. They've already violated so many things, besides contaminating soil in the river. They have more than three campers down there, they have four, and they on occasion have other people bring in their big old campers. So, what we're asking is simply, tell them no, because this is not appropriate in that location, thank you.
Sage Robertson, and Scott Anderson will be next.
Evening fellows, I'm, uh, Sage Robertson, I live on one twenty-two Hathcock Lane, I've been living there for nearly, or close to twenty-nine years. And, uh, my neighbor Joe, he's covered it quite nicely, that's been mostly my most important sentiment was, uh, was the precedent this could set if this is approved. And, um, you know, I certainly oppose a special application for campground, uh, and, uh, that's what the application was for. And, um, and so, um, I'm not going to repeat what Joe said, but I think it's important, once again, just to have a little bit of extra time now, that this could set a precedent, you know, there's, there's a lot of vacant lots down there, I've been approaching my first move here, somebody wanted to buy my land the day I moved in there, they want to put a a boat ramp and a, you know, talk about special use, you know, they're going to operate in a canoe and, and you know, I'm all for playing in the river, uh, but maybe there's a better place, and so I'm just going to stick to the something that hadn't been mentioned, and, uh, which is important to me. So what I'd like to mention is that myself and two other property owners down in there, uh, applied and took advantage of the James River Association uh, for repairing, for a repair and restoration project. They would fund it, and I had to sign up for it, and had to follow some guidelines, a three-year plan. And, uh, where they planted several hundred trees and shrubs. I myself, since I've moved here, has probably planted two hundred trees, and continue to plant stuff. So I appreciate the beauty and the, would like to see the preservation of the river, and what it, what it can bring, not a campground. So, with that said, um, I'd like to add one more thing, uh, it's sort of been mentioned today. That the code of Virginia, uh, ten point one dash forty-three designates the James River in Buckingham County as a state scenic river. In closing, I would hope this board will protect this designation and oppose and preserve this application, thanks.
Scott Anderson, and Lyla Wood will be next.
Good evening, um, my name's Scott Anderson, and, uh, I own the parcel that's directly right next to, um, the parcel that's um, applied for the special use permit, and my goal outside of what everyone else has said was just to envision your piece of land, or your parents, or children's, and, and what this precedent, if it is, might not be right now, but when I first heard about this, I went to Nikki and said, okay, so if this is zoned as a campground, can it be sold as a campground and then operated as one? She said yes. And what that reality brings to our lives, you know, whether it's the traffic or the trash, or just the the sweet summer smell of a dumpster, uh, it just challenges everything that we find and we value, you know, with that piece of land. So, it, it's not personal, and all my interactions with Philip and David have been very cordial, um, but it, it does threaten the peace and quiet of what Hathcock Lane represents, there has to be some way for Philip and David to be able to enjoy the property and us not have a, uh, a commercial campground that could be operated now or in the future. Thanks for hearing us out.
Lyla Wood, and David Weiner, we, will be next.
Lyla Wood, four seventy-eight Hathcock Lane, um, I've been a resident and lived there for, uh, over twelve years. Again, this isn't, it's a terminology issue and a neighbor issue. People want to pick on certain ones because it bothers them. There are things going on down there, James River Association just had tents set up because they rented a place, but yet you can't have campgrounds or, or tents. But it was James River Association, because they were lost, and asked me at the mailboxes how to get in the field down by the river to set up camp, that's not allowed, that these people are fussing about. Mind your acreage, mind your acreage, they're not hurting anything. What they did mess up, because no ignorance is no excuse of not knowing the law, they've paid for. It's been repaired, it's gone through EPA or whoever for it to be fixed and fixed appropriately. They still want to have their campers and enjoy on the weekend. Who is the neighbor to tell them what they can or can't do? I'm deathly allergic to bees, and it's how my neighbor not to set up two hives. It, how far are you going to go? It's ridiculous.
David Weiner? Weiner, sorry.
Nobody gets it right.
And Phil Sandridge will be next.
Uh, I'm David Weiner, of course you know who I am. This thing has really gotten blown out of proportion. On July the sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, we did receive a letter from Buck- Buckingham County Health Department, and we were putting sewage into holes, basically, like a Johnny House, and if you go up the James River, you will find more of them. We complied with what they said. We've even had, uh, engineers down there about putting in a septic system, which mean we would pump it up the hill and come back down to the drain field like everybody else on the river has. But we're not going to put any more money in it until we see if we can, you know, have this, uh, family campground. It's not really a campground. We didn't know how to approach this, so we actually hired Katie Lewis of, uh, Clue Consulting to fill out the application, which I have here, and the application is for a private use family campground. The owners want to bring four RVs to the private use on their property. The letter that they sent us exempts us from even having to do it. I mean, nobody in this county can tell you what a campground is. First, we were told that you can't even set up a tent in Buckingham and sleep at it overnight. I don't think, I mean, somebody's got to get together on this and figure out what this really means. We don't want a public campground. All this came from one neighbor. It's cost us a lot of money, we've had, uh, the line has been surveyed three times to, since two thousand and twenty-one over one neighbor. And that's where this comes from. We don't want a campground, all we want to do is go camp. As far as the sewage and what we're putting in the river, Sage talked about that. Sage also came to me and told me I should turn Betty in for her chicken coop on the river. He said it was unsanitary. So these neighbors have always been like this. And I don't know that this will ever end. But I do think that the people of Buckingham need to get together and figure out what's their, you know, what, what are you going to call it? A campground, or can you camp in Buckingham at all? So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Phil Sandridge?
Approach.
Thank you.
Chairman, I have a-
Yes, sir.
Somebody come fix my screen, it's going to lock up.
I'm going to try to get through it as quick as possible, I'm a, I'm a slow reader. But I want to, I want to cover everything as possible for you.
Uh, can I start?
No, we're just, we're not going to cheat you at your time.
Alright.
We can still give you three minutes, we've got a problem. You can proceed, sir.
We good to go?
Yes, sir.
My name is Phil Sandridge, and I'm a co-owner of the property on Hathcock Lane under consideration tonight. I want to thank the opportunity to speak and hear and explain respectfully and clearly why the special use permit application is unnecessary and frankly not legal required. This journey became, started when we, uh, had to go for a septic permit, and a representative from the health department come and, uh, told us we needed an engineer for our septic system. And, um, and he told me we needed a family campground permit. And for three or more campers, due to the question we had filling out, we also had, again, Katie Lewis from Clue Consulting to assist us on the application, because the application was very complex. And, uh, so she contacted the county administrator and told, told her that a permit was needed. Being ignorant of the Buckingham County and state codes, we filled the permit out. Let me be direct, I am not doing on my property is I am, what I am doing on my property is not a campground, not by your own zoning ordinance, and not under the state law. After being advised to research the state and county codes, we discovered the following. First, Buckingham County defines a campground as three or more campground, campsites for occupancy by the general public. We're not offering any camping to the public. Second, uh, code thirty-five one one is, is crystal clear, the property cannot a property is not a campground if the owner is camping privately and managing their own sanitation, which is exactly what we're doing. We are working with the Virginia Department of Health to do a septic system as we speak. And again, y'all have the Dillon Rule and the rules I just handed out. As you know, counties in Virginia operate on the Dillon Rule, that means only that the authority state explicitly gives you. If the state says private camping is exempt from being regulated by as a campground, which it does, you don't have the authority to require a special use permit for it, and it is not for local interpretation. What are we doing here? This isn't a campground, it isn't a commercial operation, this is a private citizen following the law wanting to camp with the family and the owners. I'm sorry, uh, can I finish one more thing? My, I'm asking the board to vote no for a public campground tonight, okay?
That's it, did you, that's all you got to say?
Yes, sir.
Alright, thank you.
That's all.
That's all. I'll close the public hearing at this time, what is the pledge to the board?
Well, I got one thing on here, this, uh, special use permit paperwork hasn't been filled out, is it not supposed to be, or am I missing something?
Yeah, we, we got the special use permit filled out.
Uh, and that, on my part, neither one of those filled out. And only book here, it's not filled out.
Four hundred dollars, get it filled out, I'll tell you that.
Okay, you might have, but it ain't filled out. And, and only other thing I've got to complain about is, and I'm, in a way, I don't mind you having camping, but on the other hand, your road where you live at, it's not a V dot road at all. Because a V dot road stops at least a half mile up the road. So, from there down, somebody else's land is part of it, so when we permit this commercial thing, or whatever you want to call it, um, we're permitting it for all the other places too, taking the road, so in my, my opinion, I don't think it's right.
Well, let, let, let me get some clarification, you saying that, that you got to permit filled out?
Yes, sir.
And you saying it's not showing?
Yes, sir.
It's not showing it here, see right here, all these supposed to be filled out, and ain't filled out, see that? It's not filled out, it's two of-
We don't have the whole permit, but, um, if it wasn't, I think it's a permit wasn't filled out correctly, Nikki would have never let it go this far.
He's not here tonight to talk to you about his army, yeah.
I'm going to be honest with you, I don't think it'd be fair to vote on it tonight, we don't, we need clarification on this thing, it wouldn't be fair to be-
I recommend that we postpone the vote on it, so we get more information.
Wouldn't be fair to these guys to vote on it. I think we need more clarification on it before we can vote, take a vote on it.
So many conflicting things going on here that I don't understand.
That's what we've been saying, is if anybody in Buckingham knows what we're doing.
Yeah, I mean, my, my question is, sir, is, I'm voting no, because we, they're calling it a public campground. This is from the planning commission right up to last meeting we had, everybody classified it as a public campground.
Right.
I'm saying no, I don't want it. We don't want a campground on Hathcock Lane, a public campground. We want to be able to camp on our property.
Like the rest of the neighbors.
Like the rest of the neighbors.
No such a thing as a, as a family campground, it's either a campground or it's not a campground.
Not according, not according to y'all's, so.
Well, the auditions, that's the last thing that I said, that, uh, there's no such a thing as a family campground, it's a campground, period.
I'll tell you what, can we get a motion to table this for further review?
Yeah.
Let's table it, because I don't think, from what he gave me, from what he gave me here tonight, it's a conflict. I, 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 I-
A campground, a definition of a campground.
I got, I, 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 I hear you, sir, I'm on, I'm saying-
Can I ask something, sir?
Uh, can we be involved in this conversation with, how y'all tabling it, what are we, what are we tabling? We need some clarification on, 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 you know, what is a campground, what is a family campground, and he's saying that the application of it filled out?
That's right.
I'd like to concur, Mr. Bryant, it's your district, how, how do you feel, Mr. Bryant, do you would like to, do you like to put this and table it tonight?
I just made a motion that we tabled it until-
I'll second that, yes, sir.
I made the motion.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Yes, sir, I'll second it.
Are you just tabling the vote?
We, we, we not making a decision on it tonight.
I know, but are you just tabling it for?
A vote, or is it going to be back up for, uh, hearing?
My understanding, you're telling me to get more clarification on it, right?
Exactly right.
Uh-huh, see, you got two, three things before you, you know, we don't want, we want to be fair with you, I'm trying to be fair.
And I, and I appreciate that, sir.
Right, but my question is, are you just are you just tabling for y'all to make the decision, when y'all come back, y'all will actually vote on it?
That's what I'm saying, um, we need to, uh-
Must we get some more information?
Get more information.
With them involved in it?
On and, uh-
With y'all in it?
Is it be another, will it be another public hearing is what I'm asking.
Is it going to be another whole deal?
No, it's not going to be another whole deal.
This is a public hearing on it.
Public hearing.
We just, I'm just-
And I, and I request that y'all do say no to a public campground.
Cover it, sit, sit.
Yeah.
We don't have to have a one public hearing, we've already had that.
Right.
Right, okay.
Okay, I've been motioning, seconding, we will postpone this to further information on it. Are there any questions, all in favor? Before I go into further-
Thank you for your time.
Yes, sir, thank you. There was a, some people wanted to speak it for the end of public hearing, but they didn't understand- understand they're supposed to sign up.
This right here is true.
You want, somebody want to speak in the public hearing, but didn't sign up?
Why the hell they come here for a special use permit?
Is this alright, pledge of the board for them to speak now? That's alright, come on down.
It's too much, and I know they've had some, some issues with the Health Department that went down there.
He didn't sign up, I'm gonna let him speak.
A building, a campground.
Call, did you see where it's not filled out, your packet?
Floodplains got that.
I'm guessing they filled out others as well.
Floodplains, damn thing, they on his-
It's two pages, it's not filled out.
That's what Nikki gave me.
Yeah, you come here.
I agree with you, I think we need more information.
I gotta have more information before I vote on it, and then do a, a just one, a vote.
I'll give you three minutes.
Okay.
Alright.
Good afternoon, everyone, my name is Melissa Braxton, I'm at twenty-six thirty-nine Rantown Road, Dillon, Virginia, two-three-nine-three-six. On April fifteenth, I receive a phone call from the Buckham County Primary School, informing me that Mr. Harshman had requested for me to pick up my son Jamal Mosley. I acknowledged the request and began contacting my sister to arrange his pickup. Approximately two minutes later, I received the second phone call from the school, the caller sounded frantic, she said Jamal is out, he is out, we have called the squad, you need to come, come right now. So, I couldn't get there as I work in Charlottesville, I called my twin sister and my husband, they got there before I did. When they got there, the school informed, um, I'm sorry. Upon their arrival, my husband observed Jamal laying on the floor in Mr. Harshman's office, and the medical, medical emergency personnel were already on the scene. The school informed me that my son was unresponsive for approximately ten minutes. I was told that they lifted up his arm and it fell back down, they opened his eyelids and his eyeballs were twitching rapidly, they also reported doing a sternal rub on him in attempt to bring him back. For context, EMSone.com defines a sternal rub as the application of painful stimulus with the knuckles of a closed fist to the center of a chest of a patient who is not alert and does not respond to verbal stimuli. This is a technique commonly used by EMTs and paramedics in emergency situations. Despite this measure, my son remained unresponsive. As a mother, receiving that phone call was deeply distressing and traumatic, I send my school, I send my son to school with the expectation that he will be cared for and educated, not physically abused. Somewhere in between all of this, my son being unconscious, public law one-oh-four dash one-nine-one, the HIPAA, was violated. The school nurse called, called my son's PCP and informed her that he was having a seizure. If Jamal was unconscious with all the above measures completed on him, how could this be a seizure? I'm a nurse, so is my sister, this is, it wasn't a seizure, sorry. The first responders informed my husband and my sister that this was not normal and that this was not a seizure, the male first responder stated that he worked with kids all the time, and from what he gathered, this seemed to be some type of hands-on intervention. The school informed them that my son had a seizure, as they tried to do every time Jamal was restrained. The first responders ensured us that, again, this was not a seizure, and they also, this was also confirmed and documented by the UVA, I mean, I'm sorry, by Martha Jefferson Hospital, as we had to transfer him, transport him there following the incident. According to Jamal, his arms were forcibly pinned behind his back, and he was taken down to the floor by Mr. Harshman. He said that Mr. Harshman wrapped his legs around his legs and his arms around his chest, and that's all he remembers. Based on what we understand, the restraint was so forceful that my son lost conscience and remained unresponsive for approximately ten minutes, as reported by the school personnel. Jamal shared that he was trapped, I have my sister to finish.
Look, how, how old is your son?
My son is seven.
Seven years old?
Uh-huh.
And two men restrained him, seven-year-old kid?
Um, well, there was the school resource officer who held the door shut so that he could not get out of the room, and then there's Mr. Harshman behind that door restraining him.
Well, I'll make the same statement I made last month, I heard about it, he shouldn't be allowed back in the school system, somebody do something like that to a seven-year-old kid.
I do have my sister who will finish, um-
Thank you, thank you, let me move on.
Good afternoon, my name is Michelle Mosley, I'm on twenty-five thirty-eight Rantown Road in Dillon. So Jamal shared that he was trapped in Mr. Harshman's office and did everything that he could do to use, leave the room, but the security guard held the door shut preventing him from exiting. This raises serious concern, if Jamal was already secluded in a room, what justification did Mr. Harshman need for such physically, for such physical aggression? What is the school's protocol about seclusion, and what protocol in regards to restraining a child numerous times outside of camera view will be put in place? I am never permitted to see what restraints are being performed, because when Mr. Harshman, when Mr. Harshman performed these restraints, he is always outside of camera view, the school thinks this is okay. Um, what are your thoughts on this? What if it was your child being constantly restrained outside of camera view, when every time you go to the school, they always tell you, I'm sorry, we have no physical camera evidence to show what happened? This issue was already brought to our attention previously, and was addressed by the school board previously, when we went up and we saw Jamal being restrained, not once, but twice. One, the first time, it was like a one-minute video where he restrained him, and then the second one, we could not see at all. What is going on outside of camera view that we cannot see? How many times is it gonna have, take for him to physically restrain someone, for you to lose consciousness and not come back? Mr. Harshman shared his, in his incident report, that the restraint on Jamal was one minute and let him go because he became limp. Realistically, do you believe that he restrained a seven-year-old child, watched his watch, and said, one minute is up, let me go? No. In order to apply that much physical strength for someone to be unconscious for ten minutes, you have to be held longer than that. Imagine a grown man on a seven-year-old child with so much force that he passes out. The school called frantic, what was their motive of saying that he had a seizure? So you're gonna call me and tell me that my nephew had a seizure? Well, there's no other neurological effects, anything that has ever been placed on Jamal, you felt like that it was okay for you to call me and tell me that he had a seizure? Jamal is now traumatized by this incident. As a parent, I'm deeply concerned about the physical emotion and emotional impact that this has had on him. Jamal will not let you hug him, Jamal has extreme separa, separation anxiety, to me, I feel that the teachers used Mr. Harshman as a scare tactic for Jamal. The incident that occurred, it happened over a paper popper, the teacher told him, do not pop the paper popper, he went to the bathroom, popped the paper popper, well, let me call Mr. Harshman. So you mean to tell me that a paper popper led to him being restrained for over ten minutes and being unconscious? No, the teachers use this as a scare tactic, every teacher in that school has told Jamal, if you don't behave, I'll go get Mr. Harshman, and then his fight or flight mechanism kicks in to where he's scared to death. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Let's call it, we moving on to Mr. Applegate.
Sir, Mr. Chairman, the next case before you tonight is SUP case twenty-five, SUP three-five-three, applicant being Donald Applegate. His request is to obtain a special use permit to operate a commercial garage and auto repair shop. The property is located on tax map one-thirty-eight, parcel thirty-nine, located at seventeen-five-thirty-four East James Anderson Highway, which is in Dillon, Virginia. Landowner and applicant, David Donald Applegate, is the applicant and landowner. The property is zone A-one, the zoning ordinance does not permit a commercial garage or auto repair shop as a byright permitted use. However, within the A-one Agriculture Zoning District, a commercial garage or auto repair shop may be permitted by the Buckham County Board of Supervisors by a special use permit following the recommendation of the planning commission. The planning commission may recommend, and the board may impose conditions to ensure the protection of the district if the special use permit is approved. The application and narrative are included in your packet. Also, a little bit further, Ms. Edmiston states that this case was referred back to the planning commission by the board supervisors for discussion on April twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five, it was reintroduced and discussed, in discussion held May twenty-seventh, twenty-five, and a public hearing held on June twenty-third of twenty-twenty-five at the planning commission. Additional conditions were placed on SUP requests. The planning commission recommends approval of this request with seven commissioners voting in favor and one commissioner absent. Would it be the pleasure of the board supervisors to schedule a public hearing for this request at our August eleventh, twenty-twenty-five meeting?
Oh, Mr. Scott, I talked to the landowners, also talked to Mr. Applegate, if you come down a minute.
Mr. Applegate?
Yes.
I'm Cameron Gilliam, I'm your supervisor in your district, nice to meet you.
Okay, nice to meet you.
First of all, obviously, we need shops in the community, I just had one close up at my business, so we welcome you to the community.
Thank you.
I understand that you talked to Mr. Chambers tonight, and maybe not right now financially, but you agreeance about putting the privacy fence up in the near future, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. I see no problem with this, I have talked to the adjacent landowner, representative, Mr. Washington for the family.
Okay.
They wish you the best in business, they do want a privacy fence, I can understand that. I'd like to see a privacy fence somewhere around six foot, that you could not see through, in a square around the premises of what you operate as a shop.
Okay.
Um, do you have a timeframe that you could talk to us tonight about possibly getting a, a privacy fence put up?
I doubt I'll even have the business going before next year.
Can you do it in a year?
Yeah, definitely.
That's fair enough, yeah.
Yeah.
That's very good, you must-
Yeah, that's good with me, and I think it'd be good with the Washington family that lives beside you, as long as you agreeance, and Mr. Carter, if we could put that in verbiage that Mr. Applegate has agreed, within a year to put up a privacy fence, six foot around the building square, that you can't see through, I think the adjacent landowner would wish you the best of luck in business, and I'd like to make a motion and we go through with that tonight.
If I do my whole property?
No, he, he-
No, I'm, for me.
Yeah, if you do your own property.
Not just around my garage, I'm gonna do my whole property.
Then, best of luck, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, alright.
I'd like to make a motion, there we go.
Thank you, Mr. Applegate.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
I've been motioning, seconding, we will pass this to public hearing for, um, August, um, what is the August date, Jennifer?
Eleventh, you said.
August eleventh.
August eleventh, okay, we set this for public hearing August eleventh, all in favor? Those opposed, all in favor, seven yes, okay.
The next item before you tonight is SUP twenty-five, SUP three-five-six, the applicant is Marion Charles Hutchins, which is five-fifteen Cat tail Creek Road, which is in Dillon, Virginia. Their request is to obtain a special use permit to operate a commercial garage and auto repair shop. The applicants are asking the board supervisors to schedule a public hearing for their request. The property is located on tax map one-seventy-three, parcel forty-three, which again is located at five-fifteen Cat tail Creek Road in Dillon, Virginia. The landowners and applicant are Marion Charles Hutchins, the property is, property is zone A-one, which is agriculture. The zoning ordinance does not permit a commercial garage and auto repair shop as a byright permitted use. However, within the Agriculture Zoning District, a commercial garage and auto repair shop may be permitted by the Buckham County Board of Supervisors by a special use permit following the recommendation of the planning commission in accordance with this ordinance in the Code of Virginia. The conditions are listed in your packet, Ms., I think at last month's meeting, there was some question, or we wanted some more information, and Ms. Edmiston has in her report the case that was introduced to the board supervisors on June ninth of twenty-twenty-five with a request for a public hearing. Supervisor Gilliam made the motion and seconded by Supervisor Bryant to deny this request for a public hearing at this time, and scheduled a visit to determine the status of the applicant's property in regard to violations. The zoning administrator visited the site on Monday, June sixteenth, with a report of the following, she observed, one, two. If I'm counting correctly, she observed eight exposed vehicles in the front yard in front of the fence, they were all operable, and she also observed some vehicles that were operable behind the fence, which was one, two, two vehicles, and then she observed four inoperable vehicles in the side yard. A six-foot board fence has been installed along part of the front property line where the cars were once visible, as discussed with the planning commission and indicated in condition twelve. With these findings, Mr. and Mrs. Hutchins are not in violation at this time. Request before you, the applicants, Mr. and Mrs. Hutchins, for a public hearing. Would it be the pleasure of the board to schedule a public hearing for this request on their August eleventh meeting, twenty-twenty-five?
Mr. and Mrs. Hutchins, would you mind coming down for a minute? Good evening.
How you doing?
First of all, I'd like to congratulate you on, it sounds like a lot of hard work that you all have done. I am a person of my word, and I told you last month that if you followed the orders that we asked, that I would be the one that made the motion for your, to move to the public hearing. I do have a couple of questions for y'all, and after I ask you those questions, I'm still gonna make a motion that goes to public hearing. I know that, I contacted Ms. Edmiston this week and asked her, was it okay if another supervisor and I came over to your property to inspect it, to make sure everything was done, and I'm sure it is, and she said that was denied, I assume that was because it was on short notice, is that correct?
Yes, our grandson's birthday was on Friday.
And I understand, it was on short notice. Um, the only thing I would ask you is, I'm gonna give you my cell phone number right here, we've got thirty days before this comes to addition, uh, for next month. There's my cell phone number, if you all would please call me and give me a couple dates that would suit either one of you, I both, I like both of you there, and maybe another supervisor and I could pick a time that we could come over and take a look at your finished project. Number one, it did worry me a little bit when they said that it didn't suit, that made me wonder if everything was right, but I do realize it was on short notice, and that's why I wanna go through tonight and make a motion that, that goes to the public hearing. The other thing is, is when we come over on that date, whatever date you call me and give me a little heads up to make sure that I'm, I'm available and another supervisor, if you could get a copy of your tax ticket, I'd like to be able to see that and go over it, are you non, I mean, your operable vehicles, I'd like to compare that to what you pay taxes on. I think that's very important, because if a vehicle's operable, naturally, the county ought to be able to receive taxes on it. Uh, and I hope that that's absolutely in order, and I hope everything works out, and I look forward to hearing from you in the next thirty days. Uh, those two conditions will make the difference if I make the motion to approve it at the public hearing, but I would like to make forward on my word that I told you last month, and move it to a public hearing, so that's my motion, thank you.
I'll second it. There been motion and second, then the questions, all in favor of the motion?
And you all have my phone number, please just call me a little bit ahead of time and give me a couple of dates that would suit y'all.
Like I said, it wouldn't have been his birthday, it would have been a different story, but we'd already made plans, and the plans was the whole weekend, so we left early for-
I totally understand that, yes, sir, I look forward to seeing you in the next thirty days.
Sounds good.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
The last zoning SUP case for you tonight is case twenty-five, SUP three-five-eight, applicant is Stacy Maslin, who lives in four-twenty Dundee Creek Lane, Chesapeake, Virginia. Request for tonight is the applicant wished to obtain a special use permit for the purpose of operating a bed and breakfast, short-term rental, including but not limited to an Airbnb or a, etc. The applicant is asking the board supervisors to schedule a public hearing for this request. The property is located at twenty-six twelve Plank Road, Virginia, which is in Dillon, Virginia, in Magisterial District Two. The landowners are Robin and Stacy Maslin, and the applicant is Stacy Maslin. The property is zone A-one, the zoning ordinance does not permit a bed and breakfast of short-term rental as permitted by right use in the agricultural A-one district. The zoning ordinance requires that a bed and breakfast, short-term rental, obtain a special use permit. The submitted application and narrative are attached in your packet. So, more information, this case was introduced to the planning commission on May twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five, and the public hearing was held on June twenty-third of twenty-twenty-five. The planning commission recommends approval of this request with a vote of seven commissioners in favor and one commissioner absent. Would it be the pleasure of the board supervisors to schedule a public hearing for this request at our August eleventh meeting?
We have a motion now, schedule a public hearing.
I move that we schedule a public hearing for next meeting at August eleventh.
Sir.
There been motion and second, we simply set up a public hearing for August eleventh, then the question on the motion, all in favor? Seven yes, okay. Let's move it down to M, Department of Agents Reports and Items for Considerations. Number one, you see the sheriff requests there to cast the virtual of the auction, leverage the property, what is the board, pledge of the board? Alright.
I'll second it.
Motion and second, and we will, uh, consider this request, give them the permission to do it, are there any questions, all in favor? Seven yes, the next one also is, uh, sheriff, consider ECO TDO reimbursement, reimbursement, would pledge of the board?
I'll make a motion.
Second. Motion and second, we will consider this, uh, then the question on the motion, all in favor? Billing inspection, consider refund of billing permit.
Gilliam, Gilliam. There you go. Sorry, caught me napping, Mr. Allen.
Billing inspections, consider refund of billing permit of twenty- Billing inspections, consider refund of billing permit of twenty-three oh five dash twenty twenty-five for Henderson Electrical heating and air for James Carwell in the amount of fifty-one dollars minus twenty dollars, a maintenance fee for a front of thirty-one dollars, with a pledge of the board.
So move. I'll second it.
Motion is seconded, we will consider this. Question on the motion? All in favor? Seven yes. Animal control, consider architect engineering agreement for the animal facility. Mr. Carter, you want to come in?
Chairman, in your package tonight, uh with help from the county attorney, the animal control facility committee advertised the services regarding the architectural and engineering services for a possible animal control facility. The request for services was placed and we received responses from five firms. One of the firms' proposals were submitted after the deadline was declared void, leaving us with four proposals. The committee interviewed all four firms to gauge their experience and their qualifications. After the interview and process, the committee unanimously chose Dominion Seven Architecture Lynchburg, who has a ton of experience in building animal control shelters or facilities. I'm asking the county tonight to allow, to allow the county to contract with Dominion Seven for architectural engineering services for designing and building a new animal control facility. The cost of that contract is two hundred ninety-nine thousand nine hundred ninety-two dollars, which may take in from my animal control reserves we've been accumulating over the, over the past few years. That's, we, we had that meeting with the uh representative last week. He answered all of our questions. Um, he gave us some choices on what we can do going forward. We're just in the early stages right now, so there's nothing been set in stone, what kind of design we're gonna have. But in order for us to get into that much depth, he needs to be on a contract with the county. And we, I think we've gotten all the amount of free work out of him that we can get from right now, so he needs to have a contract before he goes any further.
I'm, I move that we move forward with that.
Motion is seconded, we have moved forward. Now, the question on the motion? All in favor? Seven yes. Uh, item five, administration, consider fixed assets policy update.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Uh, one of our policies we have is our fixed asset policy. And that's where we determine whether we capitalize an asset and add it to as an asset or we expense it. Our policy currently states that we capitalize or make an asset fixed assets if it's the purchase is five thousand dollars or more and the purchase of purchase from capital funds or cash from a specific fund or grant funds. And it's considered one of the following, land, equipment, vehicle, building, or construction in progress. And that asset has to have a useful life of more than three years. You through inflation and over the past few years, if everything has gone up over the past few years, as you see in your packet, a lot of our claims, they're more than five thousand dollars themselves just for the claims. So, the office of budget and management has increased that amount from a fixed asset to be from five thousand dollars to ten thousand. I'm asking that we change our fixed asset policy to match that O M B's policy. So, in your package, you should have a copy of our current fixed asset policy. And I'm just basically asking you to change where it says five thousand to ten thousand. So, then when we get to that ten thousand threshold, that's when the asset will be capitalized as a fixed asset and not an expense.
So move.
I'll second it.
Motion is seconded, we will consider this. Then the question on the motion? All in favor? Seven yes. Uh, item six, uh, consider agreement with Hurt and Profit to perform E N S inspections for the Riverstone, Riverstone project, which recalls to be reimbursed by Riverstone.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Uh, when we, the project that says we knew when we set this project, we agreed to this project, that our staff would not be able to handle those inspections. A project with that much acreage, and our one inspector, Lynn would be out there constantly twenty-four hours a day and still probably get that information obtained. Especially every time it rains, he would have to go out there, so he would never get any other um information, any other duties done. So, in our Apex contract, Riverstone contract, they agreed to pay for third-party independent inspectors. So, we can hire a firm to go out there. In this case, we were uh contacting with Hurt and Profit. They have the resources to handle those third-party inspections. They will work for the county. We pay them an invoice, their time for being out there, and then Riverstone will reimburse us, so it's a pass-through. We're paying for a third-party inspector as an independent person, so they're not gonna be contracted by Riverstone. They will report to the county.
No, would, my, I got a question with that. Would that be able to, or that inspection, look into some of the complaints that were lodged earlier tonight?
Yeah, yes, sir.
That's basically what it's for.
Yes, sir, and I can also, I was making notes of those, so I would talk to Lynn Hill, our enforcement officer, about those complaints as well.
Specifically look for those in addition to whatever they would normally be looking for.
They do these inspections. They will report back to the county?
To the county, yes, sir. Not to Riverstone.
But then if there's a bunch of violations, they mentioned Apex. So, if there's a bunch of violations and they are out of compliance with the permit, they will report that back to the county?
To the county, yes, sir. That's why we're, we're hiring them, not Apex, so they report to us.
But at that, at that time, if they come back with a bunch of violations on the permit, that permit, what is the process? Once they come back, say they come back and they verify all these violations that they spoke about tonight, what is the process once they bring it back to us? Do we decide whether to pull the permit? Is this board gonna be the ones who decide to pull that permit?
So, on all of our applications, SUPs included, I think the very first line is that they have to comply with all state federal rules. So, if they're in violation of any kind of federal rule, state rule, we would be notified. If that, I'm guessing they would talk to D E Q or whatever department, state department they would. And if that problem can't be remedied, then yes, we could pull that permit.
I'm, I'm, I'm just asking because i- if it were to come to that point, I wanna know, once the violations, once the violations are presented to the county, then does the county take action? Or do we wait for the state to take action?
We can, like I said, but they're violating the state rule, state code, and we can take action.
Make a motion that we enter into the contract, Mr. Chairman. I'll second it.
If the motion is seconded, we will enter the contract. Are there any question on the motion? All in favor? Seven yes. Uh, item seven.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Item seven is exactly what we just talked about for the Riverstone project, but it applies to the Blue Rock Solar project. Same thing, Hurt and Profit, they're gonna be the third-party inspector for erosion and settlement control. They will report to us. We were hiring them and Blue Rock Solar will reimburse us for the cost of that, those inspections.
Alright.
I'll make a motion that we go into that one too, also, Mr. Chairman.
Motion is second. Also, the question on the motion? All in favor? Jamie.
Where'd Jamie go?
Jamie?
He has computer in him.
Blacked out, yeah.
Mr. Carter, while I was sitting here and had a minute to think, sometimes these things hit you before you really think about. Uh, you said that if it's a violation of a state or federal uh thing, it would go to them, but if, what if it's just a violation of what we had in our agreement, that may not be a federal violation or state violation, if it's just a violation of what we had for them to do.
If it violates those conditions of their SUP, then you have used.
But you had just said state and federal, that's why I was thinking, if it's just what we put on it, would that, but that would also be what other stipulations?
Those conditions are listed for a reason, so if they violate.
That's what I just wanna make clear.
That's what I, that's the reason I was asking. Do we have the authority to pull the permit?
So, they have the state and federal conditions and a lot, plus our conditions.
All that's in the SUP.
Yes, sir.
Sometimes a cabbage head.
Alright, let's move it down to item eight. U F L I, they won the um division two baseball team and they're going to South Carolina. So, we usually, how much do you usually get the?
We, the last couple of years, we've done five thousand each time they've gone to the World Series.
Uh, uh, can we give them five thousand again?
I'll move, Mr. Chairman, 'cause uh
Another group that won too.
Our nineteen-year-old won the state tournament Saturday night, so we have two teams going to the World Series, the eleven and twelve-year-olds and the eighteen and nineteen-year-olds.
I gave it, treat them all the same.
I would like to make a motion that we give both teams.
Five thousand each.
Me too. I, I was able to make that trip one time and I'm gonna tell you that's something that you'll never forget. And I I was seconding. I totally wish him the best of luck.
Okay. It been motion and seconded, we will give both of these teams uh five thousand dollars each. That's correct?
That's correct.
All in favor?
Buckingham proud.
South Carolina and one's going to Louisiana.
Louisiana.
No chance of snow.
Not even in January.
Item uh
Nine. Number nine or what?
No mosquitoes. Yes, sir.
Uh, item nine, consider appropriation funds received from the V A C or R O P for wrecked vehicle back to the sheriff department budget. Make a motion to reach.
And just before you know, that's just, it was an assurance claim that we got money back for a wrecked vehicle, so they just wanna put it back into their budget.
Make a motion, we approve.
He's already. Yeah, we've seconded you.
I'm staying here daydreaming. I'll be alright tomorrow.
Get your votes out there. There you go. There we go. You got it. You already voted. Mr. Bryant.
Seven yes, alright.
There we go.
Uh, Carter, Mr. Carter.
Sir.
I'm, I'll let you know Thursday, about next to six. I didn't call this evening. On uh, the appointments uh to the Economic Development Committee.
Yes, sir.
I'll let you know Thursday.
Okay.
We got a meeting Thursday.
Well, in, in your package, you'll see, we're gonna go ahead and start having those meetings on August fourth at six o'clock. So, those of you that have nominated people, let them know they'll be getting phone calls about.
For that neat vehicle.
They'll be at the community center.
Okay. So, it's the community center?
At six o'clock on August the fourth.
August fourth at six o'clock.
They, we'll start calling them as well, so they should get some phone calls from the county.
And they asked about that yesterday at church.
At church, of all things.
That's a good place to ask.
Good place, Stoney.
These that think you're telling the truth, anyway.
Uh, District Father, I got to have one more that wrote.
Yes.
Uh, Ronnie Palmer.
You know I'm named Ronnie Palmer tonight?
Yeah.
I second that. I mean, we need a second.
In a motion, yes, sir.
Mr. Bryant.
Yeah, do you have any more? That's just the only one. We can group them all together if you got any more.
Okay. Ronnie?
Wanna see if any of the other district has?
Yeah, if you got any more. Now, we can just do Ronnie Palmer by himself. I, I have to check somebody. Okay.
Mr. Carter?
I got one more. You want my head?
Do I have to abstain?
Alright, well. Have to, no, 'cause you're not controlling anything, Mr. Bryant. Alright, so Cameron made second and Mr. Bryant made motion.
Look, you seconded it. It's good. Waiting on some votes.
Um, Cameron, all the favor?
There we go.
Seven yes, alright. Kenny, Attorney of Matters. Alright. Good job. Kenny Administrator report.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Item P one, the possible farm equipment exemption ordinance, that did not get, did not make it to your package tonight. We had a draft ordinance prepared and then at the last minute, there were some changes made, so I will bring that back to you next month for your review before we do a public hearing for it. Um, then also, the new Economic Development Committee, I just announced that, so that's where we're gonna meet on August the fourth at six o'clock, so that's all I have tonight.
I'm glad to see our, our new superintendent here tonight and some board members. I said, would you, would you welcome her?
Mr. James and Mr. Snotty.
Snotty and Mr. James, thank you for coming.
And Miss Snotty.
And Miss Snotty, thank you. You'd like to have a word? Thank you. We're looking forward to working with you. Um, one thing, I mean, we, we, when we um had our budget work session, we uh agreed to appropriate some money for, to put the air conditioning on the, on the buses. And I think that from my, what I'm hearing out there, they maybe don't want to do that. So, what is the pledge of the board? I don't know. We earmarked that money for that. Uh, then how can we change it? What should we do?
Mr. James? Oh, I was at the uh school board meeting, left a little early in the rain. I had my bath for the night that last time that we left going to the car. Uh, somehow I missed the end of it, but Mr. James told me that it had been some talk about possibly wanting to do something else with the fifty-four thousand dollars that the board appropriated for the air conditioning on the buses. Um, I understand that we appropriate the money for the school board and I understand that we usually don't get involved in telling any individual group how to spend the money. I think I've only had one other instance since I've been on the board, and that's when we give the school bus driver's a raise since I've been on the board. But as far as I'm concerned, from District Two, uh, it's very important to me that the children come first. Um, and I understand it's a great saving instead of buying a bus that's very expensive with air conditioning on it. When Mr. Palmer was here before, I think he gave us a quote like fourteen thousand dollars to add air conditioning to the buses. We weren't able to give, uh, I think what the school board wanted this past year, but let you know sixty percent of our budget, sixty percent of all our income, is that right, Mr. Carter, goes to the school system? So, uh, six pieces of pizza out of the whole ten go to the school. So, at some point, uh, it wears thin because we have a lot of other categories other than the school. Um, but as far as I'm concerned, uh, the board voted unanimously, man is seven to nothing to earmark this for the air conditioning on the buses. And I stand firm on my, my vote that that stays earmarked. I don't know how the other board members feel, but I concur with Mr. James. I think we need to stay with that. Uh, not saying that we need to get into this with a daily basis of telling the school how to spend their money, but this particular deal was earmarked for this purpose and the entire board of supervisors in Buckingham voted for that, and I stand by that.
You know, board members?
I did hear somebody else complain about that said that, that we took your money away from the teachers, that they didn't get a raise or didn't get a bonus. Hope y'all can check all that all over. Yeah.
But, well, look.
I didn't, I didn't think we took anything away from them.
No, we always, we always supported the school system. I think we gave y'all an extra million dollars last year, if I'm correct.
Oh, yeah.
So, we can't say we took anything from you. No, I had a problem and I still say it, would you giving people stifles, making a hundred and something thousand dollars a year and not giving it, not giving the teacher a raise? That was my problem and I still got a problem with that. But Mr. Snotty said that didn't happen this year and I'm glad it didn't happen. Okay, or being addressed, okay, yeah. So, it's not ever for, um.
Yeah, I know in one of my, in my district, I lost a good, we lost a good school teacher, I think, to Cumberland. And uh, I, I know what it costs from running a car dealership if you lose a good technician. What it costs to train another technician to take the spot of one that you had was already good. And I don't know the reason for that. I understand I'm not at the school board meetings and whatnot. The only thing I can say is, it's that word that called Buckingham proud. And if it's any way that we can keep our teachers in, inside the county, uh, I would definitely like to make that a goal. But again, I don't know every particular circumstance. I don't know the financial part of it. It's just, I know what it costs once you lose a qualified person. It costs almost double or triple. And then it takes ten to fifteen years to get the same person back qualified. And this person that I lost in my district was definitely qualified and it's a great loss to Buckingham County. So, uh, you know, but this particular part with the uh bus part of it, I don't know how to, I don't know if we need to get into a motion with that. Maybe Mr. James or, or somebody else on the board, but I think since we voted unanimously for that, I think it needs to be left at that.
I agree.
Well, I agree.
Sure, yeah. As long as they're saying they're still using it for the bus. They don't use it for the bus, we do something different.
Can I, can I add something? Before we vote or whatever. I just wanna clarify the fact that it was the, there was the school board who made Ronnie order buses with air conditioning. Ronnie basically told him at the time, and I know Mr. Snotty and Mr. James, you, you guys weren't on there at the time. But it was the school board who forced Ronnie to buy buses with air conditioning, uh, which raised the price. Caused the price to go up to the point where instead of getting three buses, he only gets two. So, um, yeah, we, we were trying to help the kids in the county. And he, when I was growing up and, and you made comments at the board, uh, school board meeting, you know, I was growing up, we didn't have air conditioning in school. We didn't have air conditioning on the bus. We didn't have air conditioning in my house. We had. We had, we had, we had, we had screens that you slid, you let the window down and slide the screens open, and that's how we slept at night. And I'll be honest with you, some nights, some, some nights like we've had lately, it was a little bit rough. But with that being said, today's kids, today's kids don't play outside. Today's kids during the summer stay in bedrooms or, or in a den somewhere, and they play video games all day.
If you love.
In the air conditioning. Well, it's, it's, it, yeah, you're right, if, if a parent allows them to do so. So I, I think the conversations that we've had back and forth, they're not, they're not the same kids that we were. We were used to the heat. You know, we were exposed to it every day of the summer, we'd leave out at six-thirty in the morning, come home at dark. Parents didn't even know where we at, we're catching tadpoles and, and frogs and whatever. But we stayed outside all the time. So, and I think we need to, we need to realize that these kids are, are air conditioning kids all summer long, they're air conditioning kids in the beginning and the end of school when it gets hot. So we get, we need to think about it, you know, we're putting them on a bus that doesn't have air conditioning, and the high, you know, and we're starting school August the sixth. When we were in school, we started after Labor Day. So the, the temperatures are a little different from when we were going to school, you know, when we started back, especially, you know, in the beginning of the school year. So I, I just think, I think we as a board, and you all as a board, we need to, we need to have a dialogue between each other, and we need to try to do what's best for the kids. Like I said, and I'm not taking up for Ronnie, but, but Ronnie didn't create this monster. All Ronnie's trying to do is feed it as best he can. And I'm gonna take up for him, because I, I know he's, he's, he's gonna try to do what's right, and he's gonna do what he thinks is financially right. So with that being said, I think instead of just kicking it out the door and saying, no, we're not gonna do it, maybe we need to look at it and, and decide, you know, maybe we can make it work to where instead of fifteen years all the buses have A C, maybe we can get it done in half that time. Try to figure the budget, try to figure into the budget, maybe, you know, one year, don't buy two buses. Buy one, take the rest of that money and try to add A C to the buses. So what happens is, is we benefit the kids, the kids ride, you know, we got, we have, we have spare kids that ride, uh, every day, every one of those spare vehicles have air conditioning. If, you know, if a teacher comes over and gets a car to drive to a, a, a meeting in Richmond, the cars have A C. So why should we, why should we expect our kids to deserve any less than we're giving to faculty members, uh, some of the other bus drivers, you know what I'm saying? I, I, I'm just trying to look at it from a point of view, I want to be fair to all sides. But my utmost and, and, and most important thing, I wouldn't be working for the school system if I didn't want to support, support the young people, because the young people are our future. And, and, and I'm not, and I'm not picking on kids, I'm not saying all of them stay in A C all summer, but a lot of them do. So we need to take that into consideration, you know, when we're thinking about how we're gonna try to get the rest of the buses to have A C at some kind of reasonable time limit, then we need to take that into consideration, that's just my two cents. All I gotta say.
You know, board members?
And I do want to welcome Ms. Reasoner, uh, to the county. I, I think she's a, she's a nice lady, we, we've talked together and everything, and I think she, she has the same concern as the board does, and that, and your board does, she wants what's best for the kids, and that's what we all want.
You know, board members?
Not on that same topic, uh, but since we, we're all on cue on other board matters, correct?
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to report one thing about the, uh, Piedmont Senior Resources that I've committed that I belong to.
Yes, sir.
They have changed their meeting dates the last month that they met, they only meet every odd month, so when they met in May, they changed the date from when it was to a date that I couldn't go. That's why I missed that one, because I had a previous meeting. And they've done the same thing for this month, for July, they moved it from the, uh, second, from the third Tuesday to the fifth Tuesday of July, and I've got a previous thing that I had scheduled for that, so I won't make the July meeting, but I just want to let you know, I won't shirk on those duties, but they changed the meeting dates to some, sometime that I could not be there.
What, what time are those meetings, Russ Gary?
The P S R at five. Because usually they have it on the third Tuesday, and sometimes I have another meeting that, that night, but it's on, at seven o'clock. So if that's the case, is he in deal one, I just make sure I leave by quarter after six and, and get there. But these two meetings, one of them's in Charlotte, the one was in Charlottesville the next last time, and I, one way I could leave there at six o'clock and get to Charlottesville, but I was supposed to be there by six, in Charlottesville. And this one is in Crowe's A. So, you know, I usually leave at quarter to five going to Crowe's A to be there by six o'clock, so.
Let's see if we can get somebody to go in your place.
Right. Yeah, if you wanted to do that, it's the twenty-ninth at five o'clock. Stephanie Coleman is on that, so she goes, but, you know, you could just check with her and say, you know. Make sure she's gonna be there, so we'd be represented. But that's all, I just want to say, you know, they changed the meetings on me and it didn't wasn't, uh, easy for me to be able to change things to make.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Uh, something bothered me tonight, and this family that wants to have the campground on their land. Well, these Airbnbs, we've been getting application and application and application out for them for the last two years. And we've been running them on through. But who are we to tell people what they can do on their own land if they want to stay in a camper then for the weekend with their family? I have a problem with that. Our own land, some of my family wants to come put the camper up, I don't want nobody coming telling me that they can't be there. I mean.
There's a lot of difference between a campground and one in the flood zone.
Yeah, I understand that too, but I'm, I'm just saying.
He's one on the highland, it's restricted by that much, and when it comes to flood, it's that much. Wait, Mr. Davis.
Well, I'm just saying that, I mean, all of us on land in this county, do we want anybody to tell, everybody and anybody telling us what we can and can't do on our own land? I don't land on the river.
If you got an audit.
Yeah, I camp down there, but I, I go down there and go swimming and stuff, I mean. I, I just think we're messing with a fine line, we need to be careful here.
Uh, that's why I thought we better table it and do, have more discussion on it, I didn't, you know, think we should have voted on it.
That's all I got, Mr. Chairman, I just, I just think that we're running these Airbnbs through, and I, I just think we better be careful.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Board members, we, we need to go into executive session then.
Do we need the executive session?
Yes, sir.
Alright. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we go into executive session, discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose or for the disposition of public held real property, or discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body, and it's under Code of Virginia two point two dash three seven one one dot A dot three. And I make that motion.
Second. Motion is seconded, we're going to executive session under the code as stated. I then request an on the motion. All in favor? Are there any questions on the motion? All in favor?